Good evening, everyone. Is there a motion, please, to return the regular board meeting to public session? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Bieger, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. I call the regular board meeting to order. All board members are present. Dr. Venator, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please be advised that if there is a fire emergency, an alarm will sound and if an evacuation is necessary. Please note all marked emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request that everyone please turn all electronic devices to silence. Thank you. I just want to point out to my board colleagues that we are using a board meeting observation sheet that has been provided to you by Mrs. Carey at the table. So throughout the meeting, you can rank the different items on the sheet, and then at the end of the meeting, you can turn your form into Mrs. Carey and she'll compile those Is there a motion, please, to approve the agenda as presented? Mr. Bornstein, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Bieger, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Dr. Martslove, would you like to take care of recognition?
Thank you, Mrs. Leatherbarrel. This evening, we would like to recognize Bennett Wagner, an eighth grader at Casey Middle School who won the Scripps Western New York Regional Spelling Bee in advance to the Scripps National Spelling Bee in Washington, DC. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Dobmeyer, principal of Casey Middle School, to come forward and tell us more about this impressive achievement.
Thank you. I'm going to have Ben join me at the podium. I'm not going to make him spell anything tonight, though. So as you heard, thank you for the opportunity. Board, leadership team, Dr. Martslove, I'm here to recognize Bennett, who's an eighth grader at Casey. He won the Western New York Regional Spelling Bee in Leroy a couple of weeks ago, and Ben's going to be moving on to the National Spelling Bee in Washington, DC in May. In addition to winning the championship at our Casey Spelling Bee in December, Ben outlasted nearly thirty other spellers to win the ten-round regional competition. His championship word was "jackboot," and Ben also correctly spelled words like "bruxism," "uncious," and "paleozoic," who he thanked his earth science teacher for, I think, right? Okay. So this was actually Ben's first time competing in a Casey Spelling Bee and the regional Bee. So he's two-for-two on spelling bees. When I spoke with Ben after he won about why he entered the spelling Bee in the first place, he said he just decided he would give it a try. Earlier this winter, to backtrack just a bit, I received a call well before school hours that there was an unfamiliar vehicle parked in one of our lots. I went to investigate the situation, knocked on the window of the vehicle, a little unsure of what I might get, and as the window rolled down, I was relieved to see that it was Ben and his mom sitting there studying spelling words for the regional Bee. That same car was in the lot just about every morning after then I pulled into Casey. It was really a nice thing to see a family working together, investing in something positive and worthwhile, because Ben had a goal and he wanted to go after it. Ben represents the best of what we hope for in all of our students. We can all learn from his example. He represents the willingness to say yes to a new opportunity with an open mind. Too often, we are telling ourselves why not to try something rather than asking ourselves, as Ben did, why not? Ben also embodies the idea that if you want to accomplish something big, it begins with a commitment to getting a little bit better each day. Congratulations to Ben and his family, and thank you, Ben, for representing Casey and the Williamsville Central School District so well.
Seeing that Mr. Dobmeyer is here, I would just like to recognize Casey Middle School. On Friday, they did their Titanic reenactment, which is a longstanding tradition. The social studies class, Mrs. Cannon, has put this on for many, many years. It's amazing to see how enthusiastic the eighth graders are and to see all of the staff and administration involved. So it was a wonderful experience, and I'd just like to recognize them.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Russo, all of our fantastic art teachers, and all of our amazing art students. They had the opportunity to attend the district art show last week and get to be a guest judge, and I was just blown away by all the fantastic work. All right. Dr. McClary, would you please read the board's public expression statement?
Thank you. Welcome to all who have come to observe this regular board meeting. Per Policy 1510, the board has set aside thirty minutes for public expression, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the board. You will be signaled with a yellow flag at two and a half minutes so that you may conclude your remarks. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in a dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully and we take seriously what you have to say. We would also like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas, sharing your opinions, and not engaging in any personal attacks. Thank you for your cooperation. Our first speaker is Crystal Kaczmarek-Bogner.
Good evening. First of all, I just would like to thank Dr. Martslove, the Board of Education, the Assistant Superintendents, the principals that are here tonight for supporting the strategic planning process. I feel very lucky to be involved as one of five parents in that process. I'm really enjoying the process. I feel like we're making great progress. Currently, I've been assigned to the Wellness Community and Sustainability Committee, which I actually feel is a really good fit for my background and skill set. And in preparing for strategic planning, I've looked a little bit more closely at some of the research, specifically about wellness is what I would like to speak about tonight and how that relates to mental health. I know that the board has been looking at potentially increasing our school mental health staff. It looks like on the current literature that's coming out, it's tabled, so I'm not sure exactly where things stand with that. I know it's difficult with the current budget situation and not knowing what funding we have from the state and with the changes that are coming down through the state. But I did want to point out just a couple of things. Some of the statistics that I've learned in doing my research, one in five youth will at some point have mental health difficulties that result in a diagnosis. One in ten youth will require additional school supports because of their mental health needs. And this one was the most alarming to me, honestly. In 2018, thirty-five percent of students aged fourteen to eighteen experienced a mental health-related crisis, and that was defined as either a non-suicidal self-injury, a suicidal ideation, or an attempted suicide. So thirty-five percent. I found that statistic alarming. The research evidence indicates that increasing school-based mental health providers results in improved attendance rates, lower rates of disciplinary incidents, including suspension and expulsion, improved academic achievement, improved graduation rates, and improved school safety. So for all of those reasons, I hope the board will continue to seriously consider increasing our school mental health staff as part of looking at the overall wellness initiative in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. There is no one else signed up to address the board, but we still have a few moments. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the board for three Seeing none. We're finished with public expression for now.
All right. Thank you. We will move on to our consent agenda approval. This is for items seven, eight, and nine. Is there a motion, please, to approve consent agenda items seven, personnel, eight, business, and nine, special needs and student activities as presented? Mrs. Van Scyce, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Bornstein, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. I would like to thank the following retirees for their service to the district. I have quite a lengthy list to read. Janine Abbott, Transit Middle School Elementary Teacher, thirty-two years of service. Caroline Berger, Mill Middle School Counselor, thirty years of service. Mary Beth Byer, Mill Middle Physical Education Teacher, thirty years of service. Richard Bubard, North High School Special Education Teacher, eighteen years of service. Virginia Campos, Dodge Elementary Elementary Education Teacher for twenty-one years of service. Jacqueline Cantafio, Transit Middle School Special Education Teacher, twenty-seven years of service. Patricia Chown, or Chowin, sorry, Chown, sorry, Patricia Chown, Casey Middle School Counselor for twenty-six years of service. Maureen Capola, Maple East Elementary Elementary Teacher, twenty-three years of service. Stephen Varenzi, North High School Physical Education Teacher for twenty-two years of service. Heidi Junal, Heim Elementary Library Media Specialist, twenty-three years of service. Teresa Kaczmarecki, Maple East Elementary Administrative Assistant and Reading Specialist, twenty-seven years of service. Colleen Kelly, Maple East Elementary Elementary Teacher, thirty-two years of service. Mary Keller, Transit Middle Food Service Helper, twenty-one years of service. Richard Kazabuki, Mill Middle Custodian, forty years of service. Kathlin Lalonick, Heim Elementary Remedial Reading Teacher, twenty-one years of service. Deborah Levine, Maple East Elementary Food Service Helper, twenty-two years of service. David Miller, North High School Laborer, thirty-five years of service. Lynn Morrison, Forest Elementary Elementary Teacher, thirty-three years of service. Lynn Pollicki, Transit Middle Food Service Helper, twenty years of service. James Rao, North High School Mathematics Teacher, forty years of service. Susan Raccoon, North High School Mathematics Teacher, twenty-seven years of service. Kathleen Shiumo, Maple East Elementary Social Work, twenty-three years of service. Lindy Severt, Maple West Elementary Elementary Teacher, twenty-nine years of service. And Wendy Weisbrot, Country Parkway Elementary Elementary Teacher for thirty-four years of service. Please join me in thanking them all. Is there a motion, please, to approve the February eleventh regular board meeting minutes? Dr. McClary, is there a second? Dr. Venator, thank you. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. President's report. As I mentioned earlier, the district art show was held March 2nd through March 7th. Does anyone wish to comment on the art show? Mr. Bornstein?
I also want to add my thanks and congratulations to Mike Russo and everybody who works in arts here in our district. It was an extraordinary two-day event hosted at the Amherst, well, it's not called the Amherst Museum anymore, but it was-
Heritage Museum.
Heritage Museum. It was quite remarkable, and they asked us to choose winners. It was impossible. So I just wanted to add my congratulations as well.
Thank you. I want to point out there were quite a few art teachers that attended that evening. You know, they give of their own time to be there to support our students, so thank you to everyone who attended. An upcoming event is the District Poetry, Music, Dance, and Art Celebration, which will be held at East High School on Sunday, April 26th. Item B is our Erie County Association of School Boards. There is a legislative team meeting happening on March 19th and again on April 23rd. There is a dessert forum that will be happening on March 26th. Attending so far for that event is Mr. Lemay. Is there anyone else from the board that wants to attend the dessert forum at that speedboarding event? Okay. The Scholastic Achievement Recognition Dinner will be held on May 21st, and that will be at Salvatore's at 6:15. Mrs. Carey, I should be able to attend that. The Perspective School Board Member Information Workshop will be held on April 4th. If you are interested in attending that, please reach out to Mrs. Carey, our district clerk. There is going to be new member, new board member governance training as well as fiscal oversight training. The dates for those will be June 13th and June 20th, and you can get information from Mrs. Carey for those events as well. Does anyone have anything else to report under Erie County Association of School Boards? Thank you. Item C is our New York State School Board Association. They also will be providing some training for newly elected school board members. They are offering training the week of August 21st and 22nd, and if you are interested in those courses, there is information on our board docs platform, or you can contact our district clerk, Mrs. Carey. Does anyone have anything else to report under NISP? Thank you. Erie One BOSI's Annual Meeting Notice. The annual Erie One BOSI's meeting will be held on Wednesday, April 8th at 6:00 PM at the Erie One BOSI's office located in West Seneca. They will be presenting the tentative administrative capital and program budgets the 2020-2021 academic year. Item E is a call for nominations. At the annual Erie One BOSI's meeting, they will also be reviewing the nominations for the April elections for three board member seats, which carry a three-year term. Section 1950, subdivision two of the New York State Education Law, provides that nominations of candidates shall be made by board resolution by component districts at least thirty days before the date designated for voting. Unlike the actual vote, there are no limitations to how many people can be nominated from each member district, or how many of those candidates come from within a given school district. However, only one individual can be voted onto the board from any given school district. Candidates should be qualified to surround the board and come within the BOSI's district itself. Presently, we have two candidates who are both incumbents and are seeking reelection that have come forward requesting the board to nominate them for these two trustee seats. We have been provided with their letters previously for review. Would someone like to make a motion, please, to nominate a candidate for Erie One BOSI's board? Dr. McClary?
I would like to nominate Janet McGregor Plarr, the incumbent from the Frontier Central School District, as a candidate for the Erie One BOSI's board.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Dr. McClary has moved to nominate that Janet McGregor Plarr, the incumbent located in the Frontier Central School District, as a candidate for the election to be held on April 21st, 2020, to serve as a trustee for the Board of Cooperative Educational Services, First Supervisory District of Erie County, in a term beginning July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Is there a second nomination? Mrs. Bieger?
I would like to nominate John Sherman, the incumbent from Tonawanda City School District, as a candidate for the Erie One BOSI's board.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Van Scyce? Mrs. Bieger has moved to nominate John Sherman, the incumbent located in the Tonawanda City School District, as a candidate for the election to be held on April 21st, 2020, serve as a trustee for the Board of Cooperative Educational Services, First Supervisory District of Erie County, in a term beginning July 1st, 2020 through June 2023. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. The board will vote to approve the administrative budget and the election of board members at the regular board meeting on April 21st, 2020 at 7:00 PM in our district office boardroom. Item F is our board candidate packets. Mrs. Carey, would you please provide an update on the board candidate packets?
Yes, they are available now for pickup at district office, or the partial packets are also available online. Three positions will be available for a three-year term. There is no monetary compensation for serving on the board. However, you must take a sworn oath of office that you will faithfully discharge the duties for the West Central School District according to the best of your ability. I do like to meet with the new candidates briefly and go through the checklist and answer any questions that they may have. The three candidates whose term expires June 30th are Dr. Susan McClary, Mr. Philip Meyer, and Dr. Kirk Venator. Thank you.
Thank you. Item G is our Board of Education's school building visits. On Friday, February 14th, we visited Mill Middle School. I attended along with Mr. Lemay and Mrs. Van Scyce. And on Monday, March 2nd, we visited Casey Middle School, and I was able to attend with Mr. Bornstein and Mr. Lemay. I'd like to thank both the administrative staff and all of the employees in the building for the wonderful breakfast and reception and for the tours that we had afterwards. Our upcoming visits will be to East High School on March 27th. Listing is Mr. Bornstein, Mr. Lemay, Mrs. Bieger. Dr. McClary and Mr. Meyer were a maybe, and I am able to attend as well.
I'm still a maybe.
Okay. Mr. Meyer, any update on that one?
No, same.
Okay, thanks. All right. So then, on April 3rd, we're going to visit Heim Elementary, and that's at 7:30 AM. So far attending, we have Mr. Lemay, Mr. Bornstein, myself, and Mrs. Van Scyce is listed as a maybe. And also on May 1st, we will visit Country Parkway, and that is going to be at 8:00 AM. Listed to attend so far is Mr. Lemay, Mr. Bornstein, and myself. Dr. McClary?
As I am the liaison for Country Parkway, I will be there for 8 o'clock.
Okay. Thank you. And Dr. Venator?
I am able to attend the East High School visit on March 27th.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Bieger?
I'm able to attend the Heim Elementary visit as well.
Wonderful. Any other changes for attendees? Great, thank you. Item H is our community forum. The second community forum will be held on Saturday, April 25th, from 9:00 AM to noon at South High School. We don't have a proposed topic at this time. I want to ask the board to think on that, and if anyone has a topic that they wish to offer up for the board, they may do so either now or later. Or Dr. Martslove might have something, some thoughts on that as well. We'll see. Anyone wish to comment on that at this time? No? Okay, thank you. Strategic Planning Committee update is item I. The upcoming Strategic Planning Committee meeting will be held on Monday, March 16th. Dr. McClary, do you wish to give a report on the committee's progress?
Again, our next meeting is not until next Monday, but at this point, the core team has broken up into three working groups, looking at what we currently have as the three topics that we are currently focusing on. And so on Monday, we will continue our small group work on those three topics.
Thank you for that update, and thank you for spending the whole day at those meetings with Mr. Bornstein as well. Okay. Item 12, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Martslove, would you like to please give your community update?
Thank you, Mrs. Leatherbarrel. Wanted to update our school community on the coronavirus and what we're doing here as a district as we face this challenge and what our response and preparation for next steps are in dealing with this incredible health challenge. Recently, Governor Cuomo announced that any school that has a person infected with this virus should close for a minimum of 24 hours while further assessment is conducted. We will certainly abide by this here in Williamsville and follow up as appropriate. It is important for everyone to know that we will work closely with the Department of Health on our response to any outbreaks. We have been in contact with the Erie County Department of Health, and we have another meeting planned with them tomorrow. We have not yet canceled any of our planned field trips for the remainder of the school year. However, that could change as this situation continues to be monitored. If necessary, we will cancel field trips, particularly if they are planned for areas of the country that are at higher risk for virus exposure. Our business office has also been in discussion for contingencies if we need to close school. Additional laptops have been reserved, and we have ordered extra cleaning supplies that include disinfectants. Enhanced cleaning procedures have been reviewed with staff. New York State has promised thousands of gallons of free hand sanitizer to help schools maintain a clean environment now and in the future. In the area of instruction, we will use WITS in order for teachers to share information, learning materials, and assessments with our students. We do not yet know whether or not teachers and staff members will be expected to be at school if our schools are closed for students. We are also seeking clarity on whether or not any mistime for this virus would count against an employee's sick day bank. It is important to realize that there are still less than a thousand cases of this virus in the entire country, and no confirmed cases in Western New York. It is possible that the number of cases will grow, and we will need to follow the lead of the Health Department and potentially close school for weeks at a time if needed. Until then, I would ask our district employees and students to keep washing their hands and practice good hygiene so that they can stay as healthy as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Martslove. Does anyone from the board have follow-up questions on that? Mr. Bornstein?
I do. Thank you for that very much. This has been in the news. We're all concerned about it. I'm wondering if you have any concerns about our ability to identify cases in our district and in the community, or if you feel that the resources are available to you to make those determinations?
No, I believe the resources are available to make those determinations, and if need be, we can have those individuals tested so that we can determine whether or not they have been exposed to the virus.
And who provides those resources? Is it the county, the state, or the federal government? I'm talking specifically about test kits.
The test kits, I'm not sure who directly provides them because that has recently changed. It was through the Erie County Department of Health, in which case those tests were sent to Albany for the test to take place. It is now being done here locally, as well as private companies are becoming engaged in providing test kits. So I can't speak to exactly where that lands at this moment because it is shifting and changing.
Sure. Yeah, I heard recently that blood organizations like Quest Diagnostics are being engaged to help in this effort. So that's good news. Thank you.
Dr. Venator?
Yes, thank you very much for the update. Reassured individuals have contacted me that the district's taking a thoughtful and very proactive approach- Reassured individuals have contacted me that the district's taking a thoughtful and very proactive approach to this fluid situation. I have received a number of inquiries from stakeholders specifically around the enhanced cleaning or disinfecting procedures. Specifically, just because I was asked, and I thought I'd bring it up because I knew we were going to be talking about it. The question came in, have we considered the use of atomizers? Apparently, a number of other districts from a disinfecting standpoint, from the janitorial staff, have started to use atomizers. I don't know what the individual cost is or the efficacy of those, but I don't know if we aren't aware of that for their efficacy, if we might at least look into the use of atomizers to help the cleaning staff essentially disinfect more effectively faster to cover more territory effectively.
No, we have not used atomizers. That's the first time I've ever heard that phrase, which is hard to imagine because I receive, it seems like dozens of emails on a daily basis about coronavirus and our response and things we can do and what we can enhance and change. But no, we haven't, we haven't used those. Given the fact that we haven't had a confirmed case in Western New York yet, we have not yet begun to undergo enhanced cleaning across the district.
I bring it up. I did actually do just a quick, you know, Google search, of course, on them, and they're unique devices that apparently allow you to cover more square space effectively, potentially helping out the janitorial staff. I believe, based on some things that were shared with me, other districts like Kenton may be using those effectively. I think it was even picked up by one of the TV stations, so that might be something we just want to look into in terms of efficacy and how it may assist in this, in this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to the adoption of our student calendar. Item twelve B. Is there a motion, please, to resolve to adopt and approve the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one student calendar as presented? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Is there a second? Dr. Venator? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Want to say anything about the calendar? We covered it last time.
We did.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
We're good. All right, item C, our revised policies. Would someone like to make, sorry, would someone like to move the first reading of the following revised policies? Fifty-seven forty-one, drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers and other safety-sensitive employees. Sixty-five seventy, employment of retired persons. Seventy-five thirty, child abuse and malt treatment. And eighty-two sixty, parental involvement in Title One programs, Title One parent and family engagement. This is to move them from the table. Mrs. Van Sice, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, is there any discussion on moving them from the table? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. We will now take them from the table and vote on them. Would someone like to move, please, to table the motion? Oops, sorry, nope. We'll vote on them next month.
This is a first reading.
How about that one? Got it, first reading. Would someone like to move to table the motion for a second reading and adoption of those policies at the April twenty-first regular Board meeting? We will vote on them next month. Sorry about that. Okay, Mr. Meckel, thank you. Dr. Venator, second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Item thirteen is finance. Is there a motion to resolve to approve the district's Erie One BOSI's installment purchase contract as presented? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Lemay? Is there any discussion on this motion? Mrs. Beeger?
I just have a question. I don't have any concerns about the actual agreement. My question is, we currently have a way that aid is calculated from BOSI's, but I know that there has been discussion in New York State about possibly changing the way that aid is calculated. If that is to happen and New York State does make adjustments, how would that impact an agreement like this if New York State were to change the way BOSI's aid looks for our district? I don't know if that's...
We would look to change this agreement so that it reflects the district in a positive way in terms of what we're doing and how we're doing it so that we're not adversely affected.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Is there a motion to resolve to approve the property tax settlement and transfer amount from Tax or Chiori Reserve as presented? Mr. Meckel, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Bornstein, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. If you have any liaison reports, please send them to Mrs. Carey. Since our last regular Board meeting, has anyone attended a school event that they wish to report on? Mrs. Beeger?
I'll report on a school event I attended at Heim Elementary. Last month, February twenty-eighth, Heim Elementary had their winter carnival. This is an annual event at Heim, and it was beautifully organized, and there were a number of Amherst Yes volunteers that were there working carnival games. It just had a really fun carnival feel, lots and lots of families, cakewalk, those kinds of things, face painting, music. It was a really wonderful event. Great to see so many teachers there volunteering their time to serve food and just be present so that the kids could enjoy, so. Another wonderful winter carnival put on by Heim Elementary.
Thank you, Mrs. Beeger. I just want to let everyone know that The Little Mermaid is playing this weekend at North. Mr. Meckel, you're going? Maybe I'll see you there.
I'm going too.
All right, great, thank you. Are there any legislative matters that anyone would like to discuss? Okay, thank you. Curriculum. Dr. Martzloff? Would you like to review the New York State Testing Program overview?
Yes, there's an informational item in your packet regarding the upcoming New York State three-through-eight assessments. Each year, we give parents the option to refuse the tests, in which case we ask that they contact their child's school principal ahead of time in writing and share with them their intention to do that. The informational item gives you a little bit more specific information about some of the timelines and what we're asking parents to do, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for that. I sent my refusal letter last week. Any questions? Mrs. Beeger?
Another question, just a comment and really an appreciation to our district for our stance on field testing. Our district does not participate in field testing for certain test grades three through eight, and I think that that's really something that I, as a parent, appreciate, and that's something that has been influential to neighboring districts that have seen this. For people who don't know what field tests are, it's, they take days out of student instruction. The companies send their tests so that the kids can take them, and our district chooses to let those days be used for instruction with our teachers rather than giving them extra tests just to check out and test questions that they might use the following year. So thank you to our district administration for your continued stance and leadership on field testing.
I agree. Item B. Is there a motion to resolve to approve the continuing teacher and leader education C T L E approved provider list as presented? Mrs. Van Sice, thank you. And Mr. Lemay is our second. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. At this time, we will have our high school mathematics program update. I will turn it over back to Dr. Martzloff.
Thank you, Mrs. Leatherbarrel. This time, I'll ask Dr. Baylen, our Assistant Superintendent, for instruction to call forward her guests and share some more follow-up information from a previous Board of Education presentation that we had back in December, I believe it was. And they're going to share a little bit of information with you, and then we'll ask Board members to ask questions and have a little bit of a discussion regarding potential next steps. Dr. Baylen?
Thank you, Dr. Martzloff, and thank you to the Board this evening. As Dr. Martzloff mentioned, in December, two thousand and nineteen, just a few short months ago, we presented an overview of our secondary mathematics program. This particular meeting, there was a great deal of discussion. Several of the items that were mentioned were brought forward by the Board with regard to continued discussion on several aspects of our program. Specifically, some of the items that were brought up that evening spoke to increased supports for our students in this particular area with really the focus upon providing opportunities for our students to access Regents-level curriculum, the Regents exams, and also increased pathways for the Advanced Regents diploma. Several other aspects that were mentioned that evening, including increased co-teaching opportunities, curriculum delivery and differentiation, and further opportunities within the classroom to ensure that supports for students are provided. One of the items that was also brought up was the question around are students taking advantage of opportunities that were present across the schools, and several examples of support structures were offered. And lastly, certainly, relationships with students and their families is always of primary, of primem importance to us. Since the December meeting, the principals and Dr. Chris McGinley, our instructional specialist for math, and myself, we've been engaged in several continuing discussions. All of the math departments, each and every teacher part of those departments, met with the principals and Dr. McGinley to continue discussion around these important items. We spoke about and discussed our current support structures and also looked at what other opportunities, what other enhancements, what other improvements could we make to access these opportunities for students in a guaranteed fashion? Because what we also realized in reflecting upon what we currently have in place is largely the opportunities are somewhat optional and also, depending on student schedules, may be difficult for students to access either during the day or after school. So while they are plentiful, what we did is really brainstorm. In addition to certainly continuing with enhancing our delivery of curriculum and instruction across all courses, is look at some solutions that we'd like to offer as ways to move forward to really provide structures that we believe will help to address some of the scheduling conflicts and the demands on students, to provide some guaranteed support for our students. So in the document that was provided, what you see before you are four options for solutions that we'd like to share with you. Working backwards from the document, the fourth one speaks to the procedure for dropping classes. Why that's included in here, and certainly not specific just to math, but why that's included here is if we are to put additional opportunities in place for students, we really also have to be thinking about, in the event that students or families ask to elect to take other courses, what that conversation would look like. Who are the stakeholders involved, and what processes do we currently have, and what additional structures might we need? So why that's important is because the first structure that we offer to you is one of our proposed solutions includes a math lab. So we spoke a little bit about the lab concept at our last meeting, and essentially what this does is provide some additional instructional time, so it is really core content that we're talking about. It extends the learning for students, and this would be something that students would be scheduled into along with the class and essentially as part of the class. So we're really talking about more time on task, more time to delve into the concepts with the students from a core instructional perspective. Contrasting that with the second piece, which I know the Board is very familiar with our A I S services, this is more, as you know, supplemental and also more responsive in a short-term fashion. So what this really focuses on is students, as they're experiencing perhaps some difficulties with particular standards or for a short duration of time, it's a more, I would say, designed to be a very short-term kind of support and hopefully get them right back into and on track with what their coursework requires. So, and the third, again, in speaking to the co-taught piece, we do have some courses where co-teaching pairs are in place. As you can see before you, we are requesting and wanting consideration around expanding that model to include some of our additional math courses, which our geometry are and Algebra II are. So at this time, I would just like to say we're here to answer any questions that you may have. I'd like to thank the buildings, the principals, all of the teachers, and Dr. McGinley for the ongoing dialogue, and we will continue to work together in a collaborative manner to make sure that we can do everything possible to support our students. So thank you to the Board as well for having us back, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Baylen. I know that sometimes these are difficult conversations to have, but I just want to thank you and your team, and Mr. McGinley as well, and all of our building principals. I've heard from students who have told me that, like, within their math classes, the teachers have made the extra effort to let them know what steps they can take if they do need extra help, which I know is often stressed at the beginning of the year, but then sometimes, you know, gets forgotten. So I appreciate that that message has been sort of being repeated in our buildings and in our classrooms. In the write-up that you provided in the update, and I thank you for it, you mentioned a shift in mindset. Could you describe or talk a little bit about what exactly that shift looks like?
Yes, and actually, that's threaded throughout, and as you can see, you know, intentionally, there's not a separate item on mindset. I think one of the things that we all know is the way that we communicate, our relationships that we build with our members of our school community, that's threaded throughout every interaction that we have with one another, with our families, and with our students. So you spoke of reminders or, you know, sometimes providing information that's reiterated. I think ensuring that there is always a disposition where we are here to ensure that our intended message is hopefully one of always helping, and also that it's understood what's available to students, and that the door is always open to any of our stakeholders should there be questions or concern. So we are here really as a unified school community to make sure that that is understood both internally and also with our families. So intentionally, conversations have been had. I think an awareness level was reached relative to commentary that was made at the Board level and our word dialogue the last time we were here before you with this topic. And, you know, I think for all of us, it causes us to reflect upon what we're doing, how we're doing it, and always wanting to make sure that we are doing it in the best manner possible and coming across in the most positive manner. So I think those messages are continually reiterated. We expect a lot from one another. We expect a lot from our students, and we always want to model in that regard the best and most open, positive dialogue and behaviors that we can. So I think with any thing we talk about when it comes to student learning or experiences that students have in school, we always talk about, as much as it's the instructional practices in the curriculum, it's also the disposition, and that's the disposition we all have as adults, and also really continuing the positive relationship piece, which we believe is threaded throughout everything we do. And intentionally, that is part of the dialogue with each and every item. I would say not only on this document, but through our professional development and through even conversations that we have on a day-to-day basis. So we assure you that was not lost on us, but it also isn't isolated to one particular action. It's really an ongoing piece for each and every one of us.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. I know in our elementary schools, we hear about focus on like the power of yet, and sometimes that gets lost when we get to the older kids, and I don't want that to be lost because it's so important for me, when I think of mindset, that we let our kids know that sometimes you're going to be taking classes, and they're going to be hard. And sometimes in life, you're going to have to do hard things. The message to me should be that you can do hard things, not that you have to drop down. And so that is a mindset that I would love to see grow within our district and support it. So I am excited to see these on paper, and I'll let some of my Board members ask a few more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll start down at the end, and then I'll work back if that's okay. Can I start with Mrs. Beeger?
Okay. I'll echo my thanks for coming back and appreciate the work that you've done, the conversations that you've been having. I have a question about the math lab. I know that in the middle school, at least I believe from presentations we've seen, math lab is a model where kids don't always go, so it's, sometimes they'll do like an exit ticket or activity or something, and they can go to math lab, but it may not be all the time. In this option, or one of the ideas that you had, I'm curious if math lab at the high school would be something that looks like that, where kids would go as needed? Or if it's something that would be that double math period that would be consistent? Or if you've had conversations around this, if you're leaning one way, or what that option looks like? It seems interesting. I get that there's implication... I get that there's implications for that, but I'm curious what you think that might look like if you were to shift to that kind of a model.
Sure, I'll start and then I'll ask my colleagues to elaborate further, but you're absolutely correct. At the middle school level, you may recall, one of the models, we have coined it internally as math lab. In that regard, really it is a more fluid structure and really kids are identified and there's actually a daily, some type of information assessment, if you will, that indicates that the student needs that a level of support that again is very short-term, even shorter term than I would say AIS is designed for. At the high school level, I would liken this structure more closely to our science. So we have science lab. What that does is extends science into including those key experiences that are part of the core instructional program. So the terminology perhaps needs distinction because we don't want one good abused with the other and they're both called the same thing, but I'll let my colleagues jump into to see if they want to offer anything other than that. Is there anything else?
Thank you. So one of the, we have this support in place already for some of our special ed students and they're tied to an instructional support specifically for math or for science or English or social studies. And we've seen a tremendous amount of success with those students in terms of we can pre-teach, we can reteach, we can recover material if they're struggling with it. So this is, you know, a system that we have in place at East currently for some students. We've identified anywhere between 25 to 35 students. If we move forwards in this next year, that we would tie into a math lab and it would be something that they would be assigned to. We've talked as principals about how we would do that in terms of will we keep the same teacher, would it be different teachers? So there's some logistics to work out with that, but you know, I think with this system in place and being able to do it, we'll be able to offer those supports to the struggling students and they'll be able to go through the levels hopefully easier.
Really interesting option. And that's just for struggling students, as you said, then it wouldn't be like a proposal that everybody...
Yes, that is correct because we still have AIS for other levels and we still have clinics and we, you know, we still have all those other supports that we have in place. So this would just be an additional support for struggling students.
Great idea. And you have a lot of interesting ideas proposed here. So my other question is just, I'm curious of what next steps are for building leaders in the district and looking at these, if you are weighing towards one of these options or several options, if there's more discussion. I like the idea of being able to support more kids and having these other options. So as you mentioned, for kids that may not be willing to go extra help or it's, there's just not an option given their schedule, what are next steps in your considerations for these options?
So recognizing and the very piece you mentioned has been a tremendous piece of our planning. There isn't a one-size-fits-all option, so that's why it is important for us to have a variety of options to have students and their families choose from to support their needs. A significant piece of this, and it is noted in the document and we try to include the projected implications. Some of these are contingent upon additional staffing. These structures will not work with the current staffing that we have. So if we were to have permission to move forward, we actually have staffing meetings forthcoming in the upcoming weeks. We have our budget process unfolding. We have already had some discussions around actualizing these structures, but we don't want to take it too far before we know that we have the green light to proceed. So we are poised and ready, ready to go. You know, just to give you an example, one of the key pieces under the lab structure is, you know, you see several courses listed there. We already know that in algebra and geometry, those are, you know, pretty urgent type needs. I would think to a lesser degree than Algebra II, but it's still a need, so the numbers might not be as high. One of the difficulties in being too specific about it is it's next year's or the following year's students, so our present needs aren't our future needs. So again, as Brian offered to all of you, they are having discussions at the buildings to help to identify where do we see the student trajectory piece going because that really is what leads to what supports are needed. But in order to move forward, we really would like to have your support in being able to put these items into place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lemay?
Thank you, and I appreciate you guys coming back and readdressing the board on this issue. I was, didn't see any ideas here that I know that I've seen and heard from other districts that are doing stretch courses where they're taking, say, in algebra and taking over a year and a half. Same with geometry, so that way the students that learn at a slower pace seem to stay on par with it and they're having good success with it. Did we look into doing anything like that? What were the pros, the cons? I mean, I know, I know the pro, unlike math lab, the state will give credit for that. So, you know, if a student takes one and a half years times two courses, they'll get three credits at the end of that. I know the con obviously is the regions with distinction that, you know, that it's going to be unlikely that they're going to take three. There, it's going to be unlikely they'll get that, that distinction. They'll just have to suffice with their regular regions. But what else, pros, cons that we've looked at?
Let us, let's talk to you a little bit about that and what we currently have in place and what was looked at, but that was certainly examined.
So there are very few districts that actually follow that model. And if you think back to even Math A, Math B, and that used to be a year and a half structure, there was good reason that the state moved away from that structure. There is a bit of summer loss when kids go through a year and a half course and especially with struggling learners, you lose a lot of ground and you come back in September and you're having to reteach essentially the previous year and the additional content in that half year. And therefore, it's really not successful for students to, you know, the students aren't that successful in that January exam administration.
Okay.
That's one.
Well, we're seeing some districts that are doing it and having good success. What are they doing differently to get success with it?
Chris actually spoke to our colleagues in other districts. Part of the research that we shared and collected prior to last board meetings presentation on this topic actually included interviews, if you will, with colleagues in other districts. They're actually having very similar discussions to what we are. It's always about how to move, move forward and improve upon what we have in light of advancing students. I think the success has varied frankly, because I've even heard that from my own colleagues who are my instructional counterparts in other districts. I think just like anything else, there are, there are mixed results is what I've heard. You know, as far as what courses may be called or the sequence of courses, sometimes they, we realize when we peel back the layers, the structure that they're describing actually varied as well. So as they said, two years, it actually, you know, what they did during the time or who they grouped into the classes, what success they found, there was actually a lot of variation in it. So I would just say, just like a lot of other options, there are going to be certainly pros and cons associated with that. You spoke to some of the disadvantages, which again, going back to the charge and the purpose for revisiting and really looking at solutions that help us to keep students on that Regents level, not having them drop, providing just-in-time support that's guaranteed for them with a focus upon being able to have them be successful and move on to the next level of course and also get the number of years in because that's really what we found, 90% of the students we found in our district, the reason that they were not able to go forth with the Advanced Regents was due to getting off of that timeline. So one of the things we have to pay careful attention to is how do we keep that intact so that they can be successful and move on to that next layer of instruction? So that solution, when we really looked at it and really were trying to cull down what we did not want is a laundry list of just everything under the sun, is we wanted to be selective in our approaches and what we brought forward with those specific purposes in mind. So while that may offer some benefits, we found if we were going to call it down to the most meaningful guaranteed level of support that we were going to ask the board for, we wanted to be purposeful in doing so and not just give you a lengthy, you know, list at your disposal.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Mrs. Vancis?
Thank you for this and I like that it's pretty straightforward and to the point. I appreciate that. Much more pleased to see four areas or ways to support. Dr. Baylin, I loved the phrase that you used, what you said guaranteed support for our students. That truly, I think encompasses exactly what we're looking for, is a guaranteed support, not something that needs to be initiated by a student. So my question, I see that there are four items here. I also see that there are projected implications. So are you planning with any of these four items that these are in fact going to be action plans for next year, they're going to be actually rolled out or are you waiting for budget, staffing, those kind of things? So it's still kind of a, we'd like to do this if we...
We are poised to move forward. The staffing's going to be important. We need the resources in order to actualize these items. So we are ready. We're ready to go, but we need the staffing.
So with that, couple of things that I saw with staffing under two items. The first was math lab. So really, if the budget does not allow for that, I think to be creative and you put a math lab potentially in the cycle opposite PE days. We know that there's earth science lab, living environment labs, but maybe even if it's in there once a cycle where you have a math lab, a PE, earth science lab, math, you know, and you rotate it. That is what we do in my district and it still provides, if we don't have that budget, it still provides our existing staff to be able to allow that guaranteed support. Also, in terms of another action item that I see potentially is the CT sections. With that, I would love to make sure, and I'm sure you are, but that we're looking at those consultant teacher classes and looking at truly the numbers of students that need those services and making sure that, you know, we're allocating properly or maybe the CT does have to have a shift. I can just say, there's going to be a shift in my district where for the first time, we're putting CT geometry and I might need two classes. With my existing staff, I have to make that work because we're student, you know, we're driven by student needs. So and if that also helps with getting kids on that path to take more Regents classes and giving them the opportunity, that would also be very beneficial. So just seeking out those different things and really the consistency that doesn't cost money, such as making sure that all teachers are allowing and giving the opportunity for review sessions before exams. Sometimes it's based on the individual teachers, whether they do it or not. So just making sure that we have more of a consistency, that's that guaranteed support that we're looking for. And my only other question that I have is number four, it did say progress through a drop protocol. Could you just explain maybe what that entails or what specifically that is?
Sure. Let me speak to that first and I would like to speak to the resource piece after that if I could just briefly. The drop protocol, what we mean by that is a procedure by which, you know, if a student wishes to drop a course, what does that look like? So, you know, there are already protocols in place, but really because there would be other support structures and even currently with our current support structures, we don't want students to give up on themselves. I think some of it goes back to, I reflect upon what Peter said earlier, Peter Dodmeyer when he spoke about our student at Casey. We want to give supports before it's a drop. So who do you talk to? What, how has the family been engaged? What supports have been provided? So in essence, it's not just going right from I wish to do this to now it's happening, you know, immediately. So it's really about who's involved and how those conversations unfold and also timelines that are related to that. So that's what that piece is. I would like to address the current resource piece. That was actually a substantive part of our discussion. So I will invite any of my colleagues to join me in any commentary around that. So certainly while we are going to continue to enhance what we presently have, these items, we are, we are having some challenges meeting them without additional resources. So we want to be upfront with you. It's not that there's any desire not to use what we currently have, but we really do feel like given the extensive review of our resources presently and how they're being used, we are, we are at a maximum level. So we just wanted to share that with you. We would really not be asking if we felt like it would, could be done otherwise. So even with a minimal, you know, layer in that piece, I think we could do a lot more than we're doing now in the way of guaranteeing support. So I'll just ask if anyone has any comments and then we'll, we'll close out the session.
Thank you.
So anything else with the president? Okay.
Thank you everyone for being here tonight to answer our questions. Any other questions or comments regarding the math program? Mr. Mekka?
Just a real basic one, I guess, allocation of resources. You know, the special ed thing I kind of see as, as a, as a right of those students so that's not really something that we can deprioritize over something else. And number four, the, the drop procedures doesn't seem to have any financial implications. So then with looking at AIS versus math lab, if we had to make choices as to which of those would be most effective for enhanced student learning, what would your preferences be?
The math lab would be the priority and I would say, you know, if one way to move forward is not to do all three courses simultaneously, we can certainly initiate a pilot, but the lab would be first.
Thanks.
Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Item 17 is personnel. There are no personnel items to discuss. Item 18 is the district facilities and support services. Dr. Maitzlov, would you like to present the full security improvement capital project presentation? Yeah, no problem. Have a good night to all of our students.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and get started. Myself and Mr. Matursky will be sharing information on this project that we have been talking about in the district for over a year now to enhance the physical security of our schools in our district. And please know, this isn't focusing on emotional safety and emotional well-being of students. This is more of a project based on the physical security for our schools. And I'll walk you through this presentation and you'll be able to see a little bit more what I mean by that. Of course, we must do everything we can to maximize the physical and emotional safety of our students and this is really with the effort to be proactive. If we're not being proactive in this case, we're asking for something negative to happen that threatens the physical and emotional security of students and staff. And if you do that, then students really can't focus on learning and teachers can't focus on teaching. So why are we looking at this? We had a security review by the Amherst Police Department and a separate, independent security review by a national security expert in the spring of 2019. And recommendations were made in those reports for certain improvements that we should look at as a district of what we might want to focus on at different schools. And it was, the recommendations could be different for each of our schools. The other thing is when the schools were constructed, it's not like the era we're in now. If you go over to North High School, they have approximately 30 exterior doors. So certainly it was a school built with the efforts made so that people can get out of the school, whereas nowadays, we're looking at ways to restrict access to the schools. So it's a little bit about the opposite of how they were originally designed, given the security challenges that we face in the modern day. So the first item that was mentioned in really both of the reports from the Amherst Police Department and the National Security Expert is our secured main entrance. All schools should have a small secured area for All schools should have a small secured area for visitor entry that is staffed by a person. And so, we're gonna look at, uh, construction of new external vestibules for this purpose. And this allows, uh, for people to have a face-to-face conversation with a visitor prior to granting them access to the school. Uh, this is something that's, uh, critical, uh, to enhance safety at, uh, every level, elementary, middle, and high school. So, this is a picture over at Forest Elementary of what the change, what the enhancement, uh, might look like in terms of building in an alcove and perhaps reconfiguring, uh, some of the office space, uh, at the school so that you walk in and you're greeted by a school staff member. Excuse me. The other thing is relocation of school offices, so some of the main offices will be reconfigured or relocated, so they're adjacent to the new security entrance. Uh, this includes potentially moving attendance and the nurse's office to the new main office suite. And that allows, uh, the school administration to provide better supervision of students who are in need of these services, uh, in these two important areas of the school. An emergency lockdown system. So, an emergency lockdown system similar to a fire alarm pull station will be installed at every school so that you could immediately lock down. Uh, one of the questions we'd have to work out as we went through this process is what would happen to students that, uh, or staff members that might be in the hallways when a lockdown, uh, was underway? So, if someone pressed a button in a certain area to lock down the school and people didn't have a place to be, we'd have to have designated areas, uh, so that they can remain safe. Security glass film. Uh, the district will expand the application of security film on school glass locations. Uh, this is typically exterior doors. If you look at things like our classroom windows, uh, this is not, uh, really an area where we would look to do that because many of our windows in our classrooms are smaller and much, uh, more challenging to gain access to. Uh, installation of security bollards. So, these are concrete barriers that would be installed at designated school entrances. This is, uh, to protect students, staff, and parents from unintentional or intentional vehicle incursions in a major, you know, gathering location. So, what is that, what would that look like? Here's the, the front loop of Williamsville North High School, and the bollards would be placed around in this fashion so that no vehicles could, uh, crash, if you will, into the main entrance of the school. Some other items, addition of emergency power circuits, uh, connected to the emergency generator. Security camera enhancements. We've begun this, uh, process with some of our local budget dollars in our schools, particularly at our high schools, uh, this year. Classroom door hardware, the updated, uh, classroom door locks where needed so that we don't have situations where if there was an intruder, they could easily access a classroom. Interior and exterior wave-finding signage. So, the signage provides location and direct, uh, assistance, and it also helps first responders if they ever came to a school in an emergency situation, find where they're supposed to go. How do I get to the main office or the nurse's office, so on and so forth, uh, within the school setting? Um, North High School's public address system, uh, would need to be replaced so that all areas can receive emergency messages. And a new parking lot would be part of this, uh, to be constructed at the bus loop, allowing direct access to the new visitor entrance. At Heim Elementary, we'd reconfigure the student drop-off area. Um, same thing with High Middle School. There's certainly some traffic congestion at those two schools, uh, throughout the school year. Forest Elementary, we'd relocate the bus loop, uh, relocated, uh, to the current Western Parking Lot. And at Transit Middle School, we'd, uh, add a canopy to be installed in the student pickup and drop-off zone. Also, other items at East High School, uh, not necessarily related directly to security, but at East High School, we'd add a new chemistry lab and replace the original floor in the main entrance, uh, through Student Street. And at South High School, we need to renovate the guidance office suite and replace selected interior doors. KC Middle School, renovate auditorium bathrooms, uh, replace auditorium seats and classroom doors at High Middle. In Mill Middle, um, computer lab changes, uh, to make it, uh, better for our students and staff. Country Parkway, we want to renovate certain aspects of the school library. Uh, Dodge Elementary, we want to add a conference room that can be used for confidential meetings. Maple East, replace classroom doors. Maple Wests, replace the partitions in two of our classrooms. As you know from your tours around schools, when we do board visits, sometimes, uh, those need to be replaced. We'd also look at one other item in this, which is the replacement of roofs at North High School, Country Parkway, Forest, and Maple East. And this was an enhancement that was made since the governor released his budget uh, because he was looking at limiting building aid to school districts. So, we thought it would be important to have a project approved by the end of the school year so that it would, uh, make sure that we receive the building aid from New York State that we should receive. So, uh, the debt or bond funding is just under thirty million dollars with thirteen million dollars in capital reserve funding, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in budget appropriations, with a total project funding of just over forty-three million dollars. We would not ask our residents to increase taxes to pay for this project. Excuse me. Um, this is just a little bit about the project costs, what the construction budget would be, the incidental budget, how it all adds up, and a projected payment schedule of about one and a half million dollars uh, to the district for fifteen years from New York State in the area of building aid. So, our timeline for this is to do the presentation and discuss the project, uh, approve the architect and construction manager for the contracts, and prove, uh, approve the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and approve, uh, the security project proposition, uh, this evening. And so, just in summary, I'm not gonna repeat all these items, but just, these are, uh, some of the main items we'd be looking to enhance and change, uh, within our schools and our district. Some of the financial benefits, all new debt is funded by the existing debt service budget that already is part of the, uh, school budget. The debt capacity is available due to the payoff of old debt. Uh, the project would add state aid to our district, which I just reviewed. And the state aid directly assists the district in preserving our current educational programming. We'd ask if the board, uh, approves this project for people to vote on May nineteenth, twenty twenty, at the North High School gym from seven AM to nine PM. Questions, comments, concerns?
Seeing none? Oh, seeing one. Mr. Bornstein?
Thank you. Um, this is great. Uh, the, uh, as, as usual, it's a very thoughtful program suggested to us and certainly proactive in the need to address these critical issues. On two questions, really. What is our plan to make ourselves available to the community to answer any concerns or questions they may have before the vote? And secondly, um, just because it's so timely right now, is there an opportunity to include some kind of, um, I don't even, I don't even know what it would be called, but some kind of piece of this proposal to address the, um, uh, a virus situation that we're facing right now as a security issue?
I'll start with your last question. We haven't considered the virus.
Sure.
Issue. Yeah, it's very, uh, very new. When it comes to meetings, I'm happy to go and present this project and answer questions to, to any community group within the Williamsville Central School District between now and May nineteenth, uh, to answer questions, to provide greater levels of clarity, things of that nature. I'm happy to do that.
Good. Maybe, uh, uh, it would be important for us to include this on our community forum agenda?
Yeah.
And let the community know that we'll be talking about this and invite them to come and join us. And, um, regarding, uh, the virus, the coronavirus situation we face right now, um, I'm only suggesting that perhaps there's some resources that you don't currently have that you might want to have in the future, just to keep in your back pocket, uh, to, to protect ourselves or inoculate ourselves from another situation like this that is not a physical incursion to a building, but maybe a, um, uh, an environmental incursion or...
You're gonna have, you're gonna have to give me a little more clarity, if you don't mind, Mr. Bornstein, on what exactly you'd be referring to?
I'm thinking about beefing up the, uh, a medical response, or the, the nurse in the, in each building, or the nurse's office, to, to, to have some kind of resources available in case they're needed.
I think, um, Mr. Bornstein, I think you're offering some great suggestions, but I don't know that they pertain to this plan, and I'm wondering if it would be okay with you if we stick with these items right now?
Yeah, I think it's okay. I just thought this might be an opportunity, and it's absolutely fine to push this off to some later discussion, 'cause as I started, this is a very thoughtful, proactive, uh, project and, and program that I'm in favor of.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else on my right that wishes to speak on this idea? Um, Mrs. Van Seis first?
Yes, and I think this is a awesome, um, project and a plan and proposal. Um, I love that the Amherst Police Department was involved with our security audit that we knew about over a year ago that was coming in, um, to assess and evaluate. We dedicated our last community forum to, um, security and safety. Dr. Martzlov has attended every school's PTA meeting where he also addressed this, and I do remember going to, um, PTSA meetings at both KC and North that the PTSA council reached out to all the PTA units and asked for the group in each school to come up with three items that they felt were most important to them regarding safety and security. So, I appreciate all of the work that the district, um, did to hear people's voice to come back and make a well-thought-out plan. So, just one question, which I know that we tend to hear time and time again. Are you able to use this money from the capital reserve for other budgetary items such as increasing staffing to lower class sizes?
No, we're not.
Could you expand on why the reason is for that?
Well, because when the capital reserve accounts are created, they're done so through a public referendum process where we ask to create a certain capital reserve account, and we have to list the reasons for the creation of the capital reserve account, which deals with things like replacement of roofs or new entrances to schools, or more secured things, or, or more buildings and things of that nature. It's always related to capital improvements in the district, not staffing enhancements or programmatic enhancements or other changes. That could certainly be helpful to the district, but that's not something that's allowed for, uh, to be paid through the capital reserve.
And we can share that message as well when, um, stakeholders might come to us and ask us, ask us why, why are we giving this money towards this project when we think that this is necessary? That's appropriate for us to be able to reiterate that message.
Because the other thing it does keep in mind is this. If you look at this particular slide right here, how else are you gonna get the state to send us one point six million dollars a year for the next fifteen years? You're not going to. By doing this project, using our existing debt service and our capital reserve to pay for it, and getting one point six million from the state per year to basically support our programs and support staffing levels and things of that nature, that's a win-win for the district. We're enhancing our district facilities. We're making it safer for everyone within the district, and we're getting more resources from the state that we're then allocating to support our district operations.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Dr. Venider?
And, and just for clarification, I, I think that's an excellent point, Dr. Martzlov, you just made. Uh, am I correct in assuming that projected payment schedule of fifteen years, uh, is essentially, for lack of a better term, a binding contract with New York State, independent of how state educational funding may change?
Well, that's the million, no, this is a million, almost a million six. That's the two million dollar question. Is, could it change? Absolutely, it could change. Uh, will it change? I doubt it. The governor indicated in his, uh, New York State budget proposal that in order to get building aid at its current rate, any district that was looking to do that had to have their projects approved by their communities this school year prior to July one. By doing it in, in May of this year, we would be, uh, getting it approved prior to July one. Does that mean the governor won't change his mind a year from now, or three years from now, or whenever? No, but it seems to indicate a soft promise, if you will, that he will follow through and, and give districts their building aid that they're owed.
And, and one other question, it's, it, I guess it's somewhat similar to what Mr. Bornstein asked about the coronavirus. Not that I'm gonna a- ask the question in terms of incorporating into this capital project, but just since we're talking budgets out of curiosity, 'cause I've been asked by community members, if, uh, the school district is affected, uh, from a financial aspect due to a coronavirus outbreak, and I don't know how that would affect, but you could imagine resources might be depleted in some way, shape, or form, uh, where would that additional funding coming from? Does that need to be funded from us, uh, self-sustaining, or would it be anticipated, I don't even know the current discussions, that we would be able to receive some emergency state funding across, uh, across New York State to help provide support for any ancillary services or efforts that we may need to put forth?
Those are all possibilities. The governor suggested yesterday that anyone that's put on a quarantine due to the coronavirus, they should not have to tap into their sick days. In order for that to, uh, be allowed, there'd have to be a change in New York State law, uh, for that to happen. So, he's put forward a proposal to do that. Um, in terms of paying for it, the state apparently would want to pay for that, so I'd assume that there would be some type of reimbursement process to districts once any quarantines were over with. If you had two hundred teachers miss a hundred days each, what does that cost the district? It'd be calculated, and you'd apply, and you'd conceivably get funds from the state of New York. The other option would be they'd leave it to districts to figure out how to pay for it themselves, uh, in which case, uh, we may need to look at some of our reserve funds, uh, to be able to, uh, pay for that or other changes to the budget, uh, where we reduce certain budget codes, supplies, equipment, other items, contractual services, for example, and reallocate those resources to pay for, uh, whatever changes are necessary due to the coronavirus.
So, then, bridging off of Mrs. Van Seis's question about using these funds, the proposed capital project for something like class sizes, obviously, that's a different bucket and not appropriate or allowed. Uh, would the same be true then for coronavirus management? That if the state didn't come through the money, if we were asked this question, hey, you guys are, are voting on this, the reality is you couldn't use these funds to help with management of the coronavirus?
The capital project?
Correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Metcalfe?
Thanks. I just wanted to respond. Uh, Mr. Bornstein, you, you mentioned the coronavirus, and I started thinking about that when, in the presentation, there was discussion of putting the nurse's office in the main office area and everything. And it got me thinking too. I, I think it's just probably the nature of things as new threats develop, um, new solutions have to be found, and, you know, we're operating with the information we had at the time, which we had a two thousand nineteen expert and the Amherst Police Department look at the security audit, and that was pre-coronavirus, you know? I also just wanted to say, uh, relative to, um, Dr. Venider's point, something I was reading, and I can't point directly back to it, the state of emergency declaration in New York State by the governor comes with money. And some, something I was reading said that some of that money could be directed towards schools. I didn't really understand the tie-in, but after our discussion tonight, maybe that explains the tie-in a little bit.
I just wanna make a comment, uh, on the actual project and how reflective I see the final result of this process. and how reflective I see the final result of this process we've been involved in over the last, well, over a year. I remember last spring, after the Amherst Police went through our buildings, after our security audit, and we've been hearing about these things for a while as recommendations. So we knew these things would be here, the entrances, the film on the glass, the things of that nature. But this process throughout the year of going to PTAs, talking to schools, talking to principals, for example, at Heim Elementary, one of the pieces that came up in conversation was an additional question about safety in the parking lot. So in addition to something of an intruder, safety's been an issue. The concern of congestion, students getting hit by a car, the fear of that happening, those kinds of things. So to see that piece in this budget as well, that a reconfiguration of entrance for Heim really shows this process and how this works. So I'm grateful for that and the work that was done to incorporate individual building needs and rolling that into this plan. So thank you for including that.
Yeah, the other piece that, Mrs. Bieger, that you and the board should know. You might recall, we received a grant from NIPA to change out our lights to be... Energy efficient, yes. What's the other word I'm looking for that I can't find?
LED.
LED.
LED, thank you so much. That's a long word. LED bulbs being placed in all of those lights, and that's gonna be in parking lot lights as well, which will add to the brightness on dark nights when, you know, events get out, whether it's PTA meetings, athletics, musicals, concerts, whatever it might be, which would enhance the safety for everyone at all of our schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments on this plan? Ms. Julmey?
Just a quick question. You had mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, you know, our schools on average have 30-plus doors in them. This addresses one of those doors specifically. What are we doing with the other 29? Are we doing anything? Are we enhancing them in any way? Are we improving mechanisms to keep them closed during the day?
They should be locked all day long.
Okay.
So if they're not, then we need to correct that with the administration of the school. But that's only at North, where they have 30 exterior doors. At other schools, they have much less. But I say that to sort of illustrate, look at all the ways to get out, but also, yeah, look at the ways you could get in, so...
And that's kinda why I'm asking that question. I mean it a little tongue-in-cheek, because, you know, 30 doors. But I know we have some doors that sometimes get propped open. We have, certainly at some of our high schools, we have garage doors that get left open, sometimes for ventilation purposes. Are any of those types of procedures or mechanisms gonna be changed or addressed in some kind of a security update for those schools?
I don't know if it would be in a project like this. I mean, you could put local alarms on all your exterior doors, but districts that have done that have found them to be very problematic because kids, as a point of mischief, will set off the local alarms by opening the exterior doors and disrupting the educational process. So probably not anything in the project, but as a school, it's incumbent upon all the staff members and the administration to make sure doors are remaining closed and secure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So in order to get the ball rolling on this, we're being asked as a board to do a few different things. We're being asked to approve contractual agreements. And then in item C, we'll be asked to approve environmental quality reviews. And the same goes for D, and then an E. And then in item F, we'll be asked to approve the bond resolution, the bond proposition to move that money and bring it to the public. All right, so I'm gonna start with item B. Is there a motion to resolve to approve and authorize the contractual agreements for architect and construction manager services related to the 2020 District-Wide Security Enhancement Project as presented? Mr. Bornstein, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Bieger, is there any discussion on this motion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries unanimously. Next motion. Is there a motion, please, to resolve to approve and classify the State Environmental Quality Review Act 2020 Security Improvement Project, Capital Project, for South High School as presented? Dr. McClary, thank you. Mr. Lemay, thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Is there a motion to resolve to approve and classify the State Environmental Quality Review Act 2020 Security Improvement Project, Capital Project, for Transit Middle, East High School, Maple East Elementary, Maple West Elementary, and Mill Middle School as presented? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you, and Mr. Lemay, second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Continuing on with our quality reviews. Is there a motion to resolve to approve and classify the State Environmental Quality Review Act 2020 Security Improvement Project, Capital Project, for Heim Middle, Heim Elementary, North High School, Casey Middle, and Forest Elementary as presented? Mr. Lemay, thank you, and Dr. McClary, thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Is there a motion, please, to resolve to approve and adopt the bond proposition as presented? Mrs. Van Seis and Mrs. Bieger, is there any discussion? Mr. Lemay?
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion here in a moment to table the vote on this particular item for several reasons, and I wanted to explain why before I make the motion. I respect and appreciate the time that the district has put into putting this together. However, I feel that it is being rushed to the board members' tables here for approval this evening. I know we didn't get the actual details of this until last Thursday. I know we have been talking about this for the past year in bits and pieces, but we haven't seen the specifics of this until last Thursday, this past Thursday, when we received our board packets. We didn't know what schools were, how they were gonna look, and some of that data, we still don't quite know. We know we're gonna redesign, but we don't even know what that's gonna look like at some of the schools. We've seen some examples. The presentation and the ask here this evening is the same meeting. Putting both of these into the same meeting, I don't believe, gives to the open and transparency-ness to the community that I'm looking for, that I think the community deserves. I think the community should be allowed the opportunity to vocalize on this before we vote on it, before we put this onto the ballot. We've had two previous capital improvement projects, and we had presentations months prior, December through up until March, when we put it on the ballot. We had signs in the schools. We weren't just talking general changes, we had the specifics. Again, I feel that by allowing this bond to be approved this evening, we're not allowing the opportunity for the community to digest this information, to ask questions of it, to ask them their opinions of it. You know, again, we're asking the community to borrow $43 million. This is a pretty big ask. I mean, we just saw this number for the very first time Thursday. So my ask is going to be, in a moment here, to motion to table this, but not until our next board meeting. I realize we do want this on the ballot. I think I fully support this. I think every member here fully supports this, and I firmly believe the community's gonna support this. But I know in order to get this on the ballot, we have to submit it. I think we have to advertise the referendum 45 days in advance. According to my calculations, that's Saturday, April 4. So I will follow up the motion with calling a special board meeting prior to our public budget work session, which will be on March 31. By calling it a special meeting for a few moments at that board meeting, there will be zero impact. We can vote on it then. We can have a public expression period. So if anybody in the community wants to express an opinion on it, they can come to the podium and do that. And if there is no apprehension or no contention at all, then, you know, we can call the vote and make that vote approved, and still meet all of our deadlines and have this on the May ballot. But again, I stress, there is zero impact from tabling this this evening and allowing the community to digest this prior to us voting on it.
Great, so thank you for that, Mr. Lemay. However, we do have a motion already on the table to resolve to approve and adopt the bond proposition.
I'm aware. I said I will make a motion, and I will amend that motion momentarily.
So are you amending this motion that we have?
We'll make a motion right now to table this amendment, if you would prefer.
I would prefer to vote on the motion that we have on the table. The other option is I could take a brief recess to go back and check our Robert's rules.
Actually, I am full within compliance. If I request to make a motion to table it, I am full within regulation and rules.
I agree. Second.
Can we have more discussion before we amend?
That's why I was asking for discussion first, before I was going to make the motion.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else you wanted to add before I let other board members chime in?
Mm-hmm. I'm done.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak on that?
I...
Oh, Mr. Mecca, or...
I'm fully in support of what Sean is trying to do here, and I'd be willing to vote for that amendment.
Mr. Meyer?
I think Sean's motion is in order, and I think it's a responsible thing to do, and it comes at no cost, and if anything, it comes at a great benefit to the district to enable everyone to have time to digest it and hear back. So I'm in full support of Sean's motion.
Anyone else wish to speak? Mrs. Bieger?
I have a question about what you shared, Mr. Lemay, when you said that we put signs in schools. My recollection of our previous capital projects is that we didn't share out the plan until we had approved it. So by approving it, that gives us the time to share with the community, and then the community ultimately votes whether or not they approve. So what I'm weighing on in my mind of whether or not to vote tonight or wait two weeks is, by waiting, are we denying sharing what the project will look like an additional two weeks to our community? I'm all about being transparent and open in what we're doing. We've been talking about this topic for a year and a half. Like, there's no surprises to me here. So for me, my concern in delaying is that that slows this process of two weeks of sharing information. I don't know what will happen between now and two weeks from now that would help us to share this with the community and to gain feedback. But I do know that if we are to approve it, that the wheels will be in motion to start getting this information out to the community. So I guess my question to the district is, how does that work? Is there something in place? Do we make literature or information available to the community now for the next two weeks? Or does that typically not happen until we approve, as we would if we were to vote to approve item F?
I think it depends on the project, Mrs. Bieger. Like, for example, when we did the athletic fields project, there was a general sense of, well, how's this gonna look at each of our three high schools? And we wanted to give people a picture of that so they could see how it would look, number one, and number two, could do comparisons between their school and another high school, and the third high school, to make sure that they felt like they were being treated fairly, that it was done in an equitable manner, and that it made sense for their particular school location. With this project, there's not really a great deal of physical changes that are gonna change the look of the school, if you will, number one. And number two, they're all sort of security enhancements. So, you know, you could show an extra door with glass and say, "Here's what it looks like now, and here's what it would look like with the film of shatterproof stuff that was placed on it as a result of the project." It's not gonna change sort of how it's...
So to follow that point, the only change that I can think of that would change possibly a look is the entrance. So in a building, is that something that if we were to delay the vote from now to two weeks from now, that those sketches and plans would be available? Or is that something that comes as the project unfolds?
I think it would be later than that.
The reason I'm asking this question is because I do think it's important to share this project with community. I just, for me, my concern is delaying it two weeks. We have between now and the budget vote to share...
Yeah, I mean, all the conversations I've had with the community, and maybe you guys can correct me. Maybe you've heard concerns with this potential project. But everything I've talked to people in the community, this is a fait accompli. This is, yeah, do it. What are you waiting for? Why do you gotta wait until May to vote on it? Like, it's about as... You know, there's nobody I've heard that have had any concerns or complaints, but I don't know, have you guys heard from people that, you know, they don't like this, or they...
Dr. Martzloff, as we didn't have the specifics until tonight. We didn't know the subparts to this. So now that we've gone public with the subparts, some of these parts that are not related directly to the security, we don't know because the community didn't know that those parts were gonna be included with this request. So that's why I'm suggesting that we open it up, and again, with...
Someone comes and says, "We shouldn't have a new parking lot in front of North High School."
Maybe, maybe...
"We're gonna adjust it in two weeks."
Maybe Forest Elementary doesn't like the idea. The entire school comes back and says, "That's a terrible idea. We don't like the idea of where you're gonna..."
Oh, Forest Elementary is the one that came to us with the idea, quite frankly.
Yeah, and so in my opinion, I believe the feedback has come in. I believe we are doing nothing wrong. We did receive this a week ago. We have been told different items. I personally don't feel that I needed to know that Forest Elementary was getting a new parking lot. I know that this district is not giving them a new parking lot, unless it's something that Forest asked for, has been requested, and it's part of this whole plan. Things I've heard, we need new entrances for security. The things that I've actually heard stakeholders say is actually in this project, so I was quite pleased with it. That's my feeling. And for two weeks, and I also feel it's my responsibility as a board member, this is my duty. My duty is to act as the liaison right now for the community. That was one of the reasons why we're sitting in this position. They are going to be educated on this project. They ultimately do get to still speak their mind when they come to vote yes or no. By them giving two weeks, we haven't seen a great amount of people at the community forums or at these budget open meetings, so I don't understand what two weeks would actually do. And even if they said, "I don't want a new entranceway in my child's school," which I highly doubt, are we going to then say, "Okay, let's go back and change the plan" when it's dealing with safety and security for the entire district?
I think the difference here, though, is that we're not giving the community that opportunity to talk before we vote on it. When we do budget, for example, we have budget hearings. Now, we might not get a room filled with people coming in here to talk to us about the budget, but at least we give the opportunity. Now, I realize that's mandated by law, and this is not. But I'm just saying, with a zero impact, why wouldn't we give the community two weeks' opportunity to comment on this? There again, and I can't stress the zero impact. Instead of telling me the reasons why people will not go against this, and I agree with most of those, okay? I'm on board with this. Don't get me wrong, okay? I believe we need to do this. Tell me why we can't delay two weeks and let people comment about it and think about it, and give us some feedback.
Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, just in listening to it, I think what Sean's speaking to is that you don't know what you don't know. And for all I know, there's a public backlash against some line item in this that you can discover before it goes for a vote, and it gives you an opportunity to potentially tweak something. For instance, just in looking at the conceptual breakdown amongst the buildings, most buildings are at $1, $2 million. I think three were at $4 or $5 million, then suddenly North is at $13 million. Of that $13 million, $8 million goes to a roof. I don't know how old North's roof is, and maybe the public doesn't wanna incur that expenditure, but, you know, I'd rather find that out 45 days prior to the vote than on the day of the vote, that, "Oh, hey, this isn't gonna pass," all of a sudden. Not saying that that's very likely. I think in general, these always go on to pass. But speaking to Sean's other point is, it really comes at no cost to us to build in that buffer. It just gives us an opportunity to collect any further information... information that we might need. So it just doesn't come at a cost, so I just reiterate my support for his motion.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, because we're here, I'm hearing board members say that there's no repercussion. So I want to ask Dr. Marslov and perhaps Mr. Metersky, what is the negative consequence to postponing this motion by two weeks?
Well, it really relates to how we advertise this project. And Mr. Metersky, do you want to share the conversation we had recently about having to put forward essentially an advertisement prior to the board voting on March 31st if they were to do that, and what that would look like and how that would work?
Yeah, the requirement by law is that you must advertise propositions four times within a 45-day period prior to the actual budget vote. And in this circumstance, if you do approve on, I believe it's March 31st, it would have to be in the Amherst B on April 1st. If you go the following week, you're below that minimum. So you would be putting that in the paper the prior week before your approval. So technically speaking, if you did not approve, you'd still have something in the paper in order to meet the 45-day requirement.
I think your math's a little off there. I apologize, but the first is that Wednesday. The Amherst B comes out on Tuesday evenings, and the publishing deadline, I believe, is the Thursday prior to the publication.
Right.
So if we approved it on the Tuesday, we'd still have two days to get it into the publication for the following week.
Amherst B requires us to have their ads in by the prior week, on Thursday or Friday of that week. Usually, if we work with them, they'll give it to us Friday morning is the last date that they'll accept the advertisements.
So that would still mean it would be in the following weeks?
It would be, it would have to be prior to you approving the proposition. But again, that's a chance that we would have to take under that circumstance to make sure that it was within the 45-day period.
So you're saying you have to place an ad 10 days prior to publication?
You would be placing it in the B. The 31st is a Tuesday.
Correct.
So you would be going back 30th, 29th, 28th, on the 27th of March, you'd be placing the ad. Because if you placed it after you on April 1st, it would be for the following week, which then would be beyond the April 4th date that you mentioned.
Can I ask why it takes so long for them to place an ad? I mean.
That's not, I can't answer that.
No, and I don't, I don't.
You're at the wrong board meeting.
Yeah, I know. I apologize. I don't want to come across argumentative, but I've placed ads in the Amherst B before, and it's typically been, I think it was either the Thursday or Friday prior to the publication, the publication date. So in this case, that would be April 2nd, April 3rd.
But that's for the following week.
Right, but 45 days would have to be the following week, and it can't be the week of March 31st that we publish, because then we'd be over the 45-day limit.
No, you, it's reverse.
Is that Saturday?
If you go to the next week, the Amherst B would be out on the 7th, I believe. Is that correct? So if you count 30 days, it's 27 days, and the vote has 18 more days from that, you'd be under.
Well, 45 days out from vote is Saturday, April 4th. And that's what I'm saying. If the advertisement was put in on.
Until the 7th, so you have a problem.
Okay, I'm trying to be so respectful and patient of this conversation and provide everyone with the opportunity to ask all of their questions and get them answered. We have a motion on the table, and I want to thank Dr., on the floor. I want to thank Dr. McClary and Mr. Meyer, because we're putting our heads together, pulling up our Robert's rules. And I'm not an expert by any means, but I'm reading and we're understanding it together. You absolutely have the right to make a motion to table our current motion. It would require a second, but it's not debatable. Do you wish to make that motion at this time?
Dr. Venator?
Can I just make a comment? Just one more comment? Yeah, I'd just like to say.
Just to add to the.
Just add to the discussion, please, before I move on. Thank you. First off, I'd like to say I'm extremely excited about this capital project, and I'd like to thank district administration, the folks sitting at this table, as well as the administrators at the respective schools. I think this is proactive. I think it's very positive, and I think it's very thoughtful, and I'm very much in support of it. I'd also like to thank my fellow board members for sharing their opinions on this issue. I respect both sides of the issue that have been expressed tonight. Mr. Lemay, I certainly see where you're coming from, from a transparency and timeliness of the stakeholders in the district to be able to digest this, because I think what I'm hearing is, this is more of a procedural issue. I think all of us are in support of this. And I think what I'm also hearing is, while this has been talked about certainly for a long period of time, and I've been at many of those PTA meetings where it's been discussed, and I think there's resounding support overall, what I'm hearing is there are some concerns among some board members that what may be surprising is the actual specifics, like a $43 million budget, that we don't want to surprise taxpayers with. I also recognize, and Mr. Metersky, I thank you for your comments, because I think that's very helpful. What I'm hearing from you is that if we were to delay tonight, it would potentially impact the launch of this through the Amherst B. So I'm just sharing my thoughts because I think it's important to reflect on the overall comments from the board members. But it's certainly something that I think this capital project resonates with the community, and it's something I think we need to move forward with. And I just want to commend everybody involved, because I think it's fantastic work.
Thank you. I do want to make sure everyone knows I'm trying to give everyone the opportunity to talk. So forgive me if I don't see a hand. So back to the original question, are you asking to make a motion to table?
I am making a formal motion to table this motion.
Okay, Dr. McClary, sec. Oh, we need a second. I'm sorry. So we need a second, and then there cannot be debate on this motion according to our Robert's rule. So we have our second. So we are voting on whether to table the motion that was on the table of approval of the bond proposition. All in favor?
Table it.
Two to table it. Opposed? Thank you. Abstentions? Okay, motion fails. All right, so now we will return to the original motion on the table, which already had a motion in a second. At this time, Mrs. Carey will take the roll call vote on the adoption of the resolution for the approval of the bond proposition.
And I'll call your name, and you may state yes or no. Mrs. Bieger?
Yes.
Mr. Vorenstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Leatherbarrel?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Dr. McClary?
Yes.
Mr. Mecca?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Vansys?
Yes.
And Dr. Venator?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
All right, moving on to our repair reserve proposals. We will be having a hearing. Dr. Marslov, would you like to speak to us about our repair proposals, repair reserve proposals?
Yes, each year, we put forward a number of items we'd like to focus on through our repair reserve, and we've done that again this year. It is a little lower than normal years based on all the capital project work we're going to be having. For example, at North High School and East High School, starting this Friday, they'll be putting up fencing for the construction of the new music classroom space in Wings. So we're going to have a lot happening, but there are some items we think are important to address this coming summer.
Thank you, Dr. Marslov. Does anyone have any questions regarding that update? Mr. Lemay?
Not directly related to this, but it really didn't fit anywhere else in tonight's agenda. Dr. Marslov, can you talk at all about what the board did at a school visit last Monday through Casey Middle School, and we saw some damage to the auditorium in there due to a water leak? Is that a drastic repair? Is it a minor repair? Is it something we're going to be seeing coming out of a future reserve request?
I was not aware of any water leak that was reviewed by the board, or perhaps I missed it.
When we walked through.
Oh, I know. The middle school on Monday.
Oh, wasn't it?
I know. Was it high? No?
It was the.
I know, it was just.
One of the after programs left the shower on, and it flooded the gymnasium.
Oh, Casey in the gym, yeah.
Right, yes. Because we walked the floor, we saw it all bubbled, and the wood was coming up, and.
It's been submitted to our insurance company.
Do we, is the auditorium non-functional, at least that portion of it? Is it something we can repair while we wait for funding?
Yeah, my understanding is they still have use of it. And on the gym, we've tried to do as much as we can to settle it and dry it and take a dehumidifier in that space that was put over there. We have some larger ones that you can imagine. So we've done as much as we can, but it will require refinishing, and then we'll repair everything.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? We'll now have a public hearing for the repair reserve projects. Anyone wishing to address the board in regard to the proposed repair reserve projects may go to the podium at this time. Don't everybody run up at once. All right, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the repair reserve funding as presented? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Bieger? Thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion down there? You want to share? Nope? Okay, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Item 20 is our annual district vote, resolutions, and public notices. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to hold the annual district vote on Tuesday, May 19th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. in the North High School gym, which is 1595 Hopkins Road, Williamsville, New York, 14221, excuse me. Mr. Lemay, thank you. And Dr. Venator, thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. All right. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the resolutions and public notices as presented? Mr. Lemay again, thank you. I need a second, please. Mr. Meyer, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on that item. There are no items to discuss for special needs and student activities. Does anyone have a request or matter to discuss under committee of the whole?
I do.
Mr. Vorenstein?
Thank you very much. I.
Virus?
I'm sorry?
The coronavirus?
It's not. Not at this time. Can't see around the pillar there, but is Alexis Kirkland here from the Census Bureau?
Yes.
Hello? Oh, Alexis. Okay, then I'm going to hold off and give you a chance to speak at our last public expression. Okay, thank you.
Yep, it'll be coming up in just a moment. Is there any other matters anyone wants to discuss for committee of the whole? Thank you. And thank you so much for waiting it out for us. But we will now conduct our second public expression with the same rules as outlined for our first public expression. Anyone wishing to address the board may go to the podium, and please sign in at this time. We can have you sign in if there's not a clipboard up there. Welcome. Thank you.
That's it. I was going to comment that if you would go ahead and have your three minutes, but then sign as you're walking back.
Sure will, sure will. Thank you. No problem. Thank you, everyone, for allowing me to speak tonight. I won't take up that much time. I'm just here because I know you guys are all community leaders and community liaisons, and we need your help from the U.S. Census, spreading the awareness of why it's so important for our communities to respond. So I just want to share how it's going about this year, because it's a little bit different. So this year, what's going to happen is this actual Thursday, the 12th, invitations will start to go out into the mail into everyone's homes, inviting them to respond to the census. So it's going to be a little different. They won't get like the little postcard that says, check off, you know, the boxes are filling. It will literally be an invitation that has a code that they can go online or call on the phone to respond. So we're hoping that this makes it a little bit easier, and we'll get a few more people to self-respond. One of the other cool items that they did is that, other than English, there are also 12 other languages that they will have available via internet or telephone that everyone can respond to, as well as 59 other language glossaries or videos to show people how to respond. So that will be really cool. And further out into our mission, you will see people out into the communities. If we don't get people to respond knocking on doors, I know a lot of people ask about some of the scams that have been going on already. We've seen, like, on our West Side, people have already been knocking on people's doors. So one of the things we tell people is, no one will ever come to your door and ask for your social security number, you know, things like that. We're hoping that we can get certain items that people are very aware of, who are the census workers and when they're coming to their doors. They'll always have a badge and things as such. So that's very, very, much so important. So we're really asking for help with just spreading awareness about why it's coming out. Of course, you guys know it's $650 billion that's on the table for the next 10 years. And we'll never get the chance to change it until 2030. So we don't ever want to give ourselves the short end of the stick. So that, you know, goes for school funding, healthcare funding, our infrastructures, our roads, everything like that. So it's very, very important that we get everyone counted once and only once and in the right place, regardless of whether, I know a lot of people ask if citizenship is a question. It is not. So they're not ever going to ask if you are a citizen or not. And then the only other thing that I would like to share is, we also have a really cool program called Statistics in Schools. It's materials that are driven by census data. It goes from K to 12, and it's also materials for adult learners as well as English as a second language learners. So if anyone is interested in that material, what that may look like, I can also provide more information. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being.
Hey, Alexis, is there a website that you can tell us about if people are interested in helping with the census?
Oh, absolutely. And really quickly, if you are interested, everything that you can find online is just 2020census.gov. You can find a slew of different materials, workshops, trainings, statistics in schools, any information. We have a great data dissemination program that will provide any materials that you may need to help get the word out.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm passing the clipboard down, and if you wouldn't mind signing it.
Thanks, Alexis.
Thank you so much. All right, does anyone else wish to speak during our public expression? Thank you for sticking with us tonight. All right. Would someone like to make a motion to recess the regular board meeting? And I'm going to ask that we take about a five- to seven-minute recess, because I need to use a laboratory, and I think some other people do as well. And then after that, we will conduct our budget work session. Is there a motion, please, to recess? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Dr. Venator, second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor to recess?
Thank you.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. I would like to call the budget work session to order. All board members are present in the building. They're just joining us back at the table shortly. Dr. Marslov, would you like to start the 2021 budget development presentation?
Yes, I will. Mrs. Leatherbarrel, thank you. Certainly, we've had a lot of discussion over the last few months about the development of the 2020-21 school budget for our district, and I want to share some further information this evening, looking at our preliminary budget. And of course, our planning priorities when it comes to the budget is to preserve academic and extracurricular programming for students, build and manage a fiscally responsible budget that taxpayers can support, and prioritize expense reductions and maximize potential savings along the way. Our timeline, beginning back in January, was looking at our program continuation and required expenses, looking at in February, our tax cap review and what that was looking like, looking at our initial revenue outlook and budget reduction options. This evening, we have our preliminary budget presentation and considering proposition resolutions. The rest of this timeline, we'll talk about later in the presentation when we look at where we're going from here. What does the current budget do? It maintains the current level of instructional and extracurricular programming for students. It maintains a focus on mental, physical, emotional well-being of students at all levels in the district. It certainly continues to offer expansive, advanced placement course selection, supports university and college partnerships that allow students to earn college credit while they're still in high school, certainly a big benefit to students and families. It supports. It supports the third year of a three-year plan to strengthen administrative support at the elementary and high school level. It continues to support a high level of professional development for all teachers and staff members, and it keeps the tax levy increase below the state tax cap limit. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Matorski and ask him to continue on with our presentation and share with you further information, the specific items in our budget.
Thank you, Dr. Mertzloth. Thank you, Dr. Mertzloth. What I have here is the program continuation items. These are the same dollars that we've been reviewing for the last couple of months. Program continuation as a review is what we need to continue the existing programs we have in effect today. So again, the salary number is the same that you've seen, $4.7 million. The social security or FICA payment of a $300,000 increase. And just to clarify, that is the employer's share. That's what we, as a school district, are required to pay the federal government. Health insurance increase of $195,000 and a BOSI service increase of $400,000 for the total increase of $5,607,253. The next piece is what we call our items, which are for support of our programs. And there are two items here. Dr. Mertzloth already mentioned that we're continuing with this final phase of the administrative support, and that's an increase of $154,000. And we have an increase of $100,000 for equipment. So that provides this increase for the support area of $254,000. So when we look at what that was, and we have to look at what the balancing our budget would be, we had to go back and we shared some of these, one of these reductions early on in our last meeting, and this is the other piece of it. So we start with the transportation savings of $500,000. We're eliminating that increase that I just showed you on equipment of $100,000, and we're projecting savings from both New York State retirement systems of $300,000, and we're projecting savings from our own teacher retirements, which we had earlier, a long list earlier this evening. That's a $500,000 savings. And then we completed a very comprehensive review of our entire budget to really come up with the $446,361. So that's a total decrease of $1,846,361. So this here shows you the summary of where we were with the increases and where we are when it comes to the current budget. So you can see, again, we start with this year's budget of $195,184,38. And when you take the increases, the total, less the reductions, we have a net increase of our budget this year, as being presented here, of $4,014,892, which creates a preliminary working budget of $199,199,730, which is a 2.06% increase. So as we continue, we've had a lot of discussion this year already on state aid. And one of the issues that we were discussing was how the governor's proposal consolidated certain aid categories, categorical aid categories, to be specific. Those that impact the Williamsville Central School District are listed here stating as BOSI's, library materials, textbooks, software, hardware, technology, and supplemental public excess cost aid. The point I just want to make here is if that were to be incorporated into a consolidated state aid, whether or not it's limited to 2% or whether it goes away completely, the increase that we had for BOSI's is over 2% this year. So if that were to occur on a state aid perspective, we would not get our total increase. We would be getting less for that increase in future years than what we are able to get under the current formulas. So when we look at the total state aid for this year, you'll see that there's a lot of differences and changes in it. And foundation aid is, I have broken this down, so instead of showing the consolidated number, I was able to get from the state what the actual numbers are, which are the components. And so that is how I broke it down, so it's more easily seen on where the increases really are coming from and decreases. So our budget this year for state aid is $24.9 million on foundation aid, and it would go up by $585,771. The excess cost aid is going to go down by about $33,000. Transportation aid is up by $244,000. BOSI's aid would go up by $82,000. And then our categorical aids for library, software, and textbook would go down by about $19,000. The big decrease you see there is for building aid, and the reason for that is we are, the building aid projects from 2006 are no longer being aided as we go forward. The new projects that we have are aided at about 10% less. And so even though we have the same number of projects being aided, the aid being received by the district is less, and that's the result of the major decrease in building aid of So all of that nets to, unfortunately, an increase in state aid of zero. Moving to the other major revenue, we saw at the last meeting that our tax cap is at 2.76%, and we presented an increase of 2.75% or the $3,489,092. So when we look at a summary of the revenue budget, you'll see that we've got the tax levy increase of $3,489,092 and other revenue increase of $5,25,800. And specifically, that's made up of a sales tax increase. It's made up of, which is, of $100,000. It's made up of an interest earning increase of $400,000 and a pilot in lieu of tax increase of $150,000. There are some other slight adjustments that are reducing it for gifts and donations that had to go down, and some other small miscellaneous, which results in it being an increase of $5,25,800. But that helps us significantly in balancing our budget, and those equal the same amount as our expense increase, which is not surprising, $4,014,892, and that balances our revenue budget at the same $199,199,730 number. So just in summary, you'll see what the budget increase is, that $4 million at 2.06%. Our tax levy increase is at 2.75. Again, that's under the cap. And the estimated tax rate increase is also at 2.75%. And what I'll share is that this is based on last year's assessed values and last year's equalization rates. The equalization rates have not yet been provided to us by the New York State Department of Finance. That should be coming in April, and the assessed values do not, are not received until the end of June. So with that as a basis, we calculated what would be the impact to a $150,000 assessed home under the basic star program. That would be $58.99, and enhanced star would be $41.98. And again, this is really using the, what I'll say is the earlier star programs. The new star programs, as you know, are credits to people's income taxes, state income taxes. But this is the program, and these are the numbers that would go on our budget notice. Looking at a five-year comparison on the preliminary budget numbers we're sharing tonight, you'll see that we're in line with what we've done in the past. In fact, our budget increase is lower than what you've seen in most of those years at 2.06%, and our tax levy is at 275, as we've been saving, as well as the tax rate. Again, we're below the tax cap, and we've been below the tax cap since it's been implemented. With that, we're again in the next steps, which is having this hearing today. We have a budget work session, as you are all aware, in March 31st, and then we would be reviewing the budget for a proposed adoption on April 21st with the May 7th annual meeting that would discuss the budget and have a forum also for candidates night. And then finally, the budget vote is on May 19th. With that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Matorski, for all of your leadership and work on this presentation for us. Are there any board questions or comments on the budget? I'll start on my left and work down this way. Dr. Venider, do you have a hand up, too?
Yes.
Do you want to go first, and then we can go all the way down, or? Mr. Maga.
Just wondering, you indicated a savings on the New York State Teacher Retirement System contributions. Is that based on the relatively smaller salaries of new hires versus the retired? Because I noticed the rate is going to go up this year about, you know, 2/3 of a percent or something.
Yeah, it's really a combination of that and the fact that although the rate will be going up, we have some savings that have been kept at that code for just this purpose. If you go back to the presentation I shared in December, it shows how those fluctuations happened over years, where you have highs and lows. We keep those dollars pretty much the same, so we don't have to worry about that as a fluctuation.
Thanks.
Dr. Venider?
Yes. Mr. Matorski, thank you very much for the informative presentation. Just one quick question. Going back to the slide on anticipated expense reductions, the last line item was comprehensive budget review of $446,361, so $446,000, not necessarily inconsequential amount of money. I wouldn't necessarily call it change under the cushions of the couch. Can you just give us some insights into what makes up that number, please?
Sure. Every year when the budget is put together, this preliminary budget, a review of every single budget code is completed. And that review includes looking at last year's final expenses. It looks at what's going on this year. It tries to project forward what we think we're going to be doing in other years. And then it looks at items that really have changed from the, I'd say, the district perspective. So a great example would be our energy codes. You look to see what's going on in the energy codes, what's going on in the energy markets, and we always want to keep something in there for the, you know, the unexpected increase. But when you have several years where you've had some stable dollars and stable budgets and stable expenses, you're able to look at those categories and say, we can trim just a little bit from them. And that's essentially what happens here.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions on my left? How about on my right? Questions or comments? Mr. Lemay?
Thank you for the presentation again. A couple of minor questions. One, I did want to say thank you for breaking out the, excuse me, the state aid formula and breaking out the transportation, BOSI's aid, that sort of stuff. I know several of us, myself included, have been promoting with the community how important it is to keep these separate from being lumped into the foundation aid formula. My one question, you kind of commented on it a little bit there, but the building aid drops by $860,000. You said something about 10% and that's going forward because it fell off. Was that because the previous capital projects were not as large as the ones that are current? Or is it because the funding changed, the reimbursement?
It is the funding reimbursement change. Those projects were aided at 76.9%. Current projects are aided at 69%.
Okay, I got you. Okay, so thank you for that. Two minor questions, and I don't know that you're going to know the answer to these. It's probably more for the district. One, I should have probably asked Dr. Ballin when you had the math team up here. What is your specific ask, and what's the dollar amount to that? Are you specifically asking for six people to be hired? Are you specific? I mean, we need, I need at least from my own self-knowledge, a specific and then a budgetary item to go with that. And then a secondary question, I know we've talked about reducing class sizes and that sort of stuff, and I know we still haven't seen a dollar amount number on that yet either. So I'd like to know, you know, I understand it's probably not going to hit the budget, but I'd like to know what the dollar amounts for these things are, so...
Both of those items, we plan to share with the board at the March 31st meeting.
Okay.
In other words, what is it going to cost if we potentially reduce class size? And from the perspective of math to do like a double period, what would that cost at each school? How deep do you want to dive into it? Do we want to pilot something? We want to come up with a reasonable recommendation for the board for that meeting.
Perfect. So March 31st, we'll have that info. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Venider?
Just building off your comment, it might be helpful, and you're probably going to put this in, that if you do look at what those costs are for those additional support services, be it math teachers or reducing class sizes, it might be helpful, which you probably include in that discussion to maybe show what the trade-offs will be, since we don't have a limited, unlimited bucket of money, that if we move towards that, where we may have to be allocating funds or shaving funds for other programs or support efforts. I think that might be helpful, just to provide some visibility and perspective to the community to understand where trade-offs may have to be made.
Thank you. Good discussion on our budget tonight. We will now have our public forum for the budget only. Would anyone like to address the board to speak on the budget? No, no pressure. All right. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the budget public forum? Dr. Venider, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Van Slies, is there any discussion? I hope not. Okay, great. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. So our budget forum just ended. Would someone like to make a motion to return to the regular board meeting? Dr. Venider, thank you. Mr. Lemay, second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Great, we're back. All right. I just wanted to remind all of our board members that we have a board member observation tool to fill out. There's not going to be a second executive session, so if everyone would just take a few minutes to finish that and slide it down to Mrs. Carey. On March 31st at 7:00 p.m., the budget work session will be held here at District Office, and our next regular board meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 21st at 7:00 p.m., also here at District Office. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting? Mr. Lemay, second. Mrs. Bieger, I saw it at hand. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Wait for it. All right, motion carried unanimously. Good night, everyone.